Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 24th, 2023 Regular and Work Session Meetings of the Pinehurst Village Council. I'm Mayor John Strickland. We have all the council members here today. Our town manager, Jeff Sanborn, and other members of the staff and public are here in Village Hall. If you are not in Village Hall but are watching on the livestream and wish to make a comment on any subject whatsoever to the Village Council today, you can do so by email to the email address of publiccomments@vopnc.org. It's publiccomments@vopnc.org. That goes to the village clerk, who will circulate those requests and comments to the Village Council and appropriate staff in the coming days. They will not be read, however, at this meeting. Having called the meeting to order, we'll go to our invocation tonight. We have Pastor Dan Francis from Christ Community Church with us this evening. Dan, if you'd like to use that poet in there, would you all stand? And we'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, our great and glorious God, the Source and Sustainer of all good and initiator and example of all love and compassion, the One who is over all and through all and in all things, we come before you today and give you thanks for the many blessings that we enjoy, the most significant of which is your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And we humbly ask that your hand of blessing might be upon this gathering today. We acknowledge that you are the One with all power, the One who is ever-present and the One who is all-knowing. And we ask that you would give great wisdom and discernment to this Village Council, guide and direct to this meeting, as that they might be productive in all their decisions and honorable in all their discussions. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Before we move on into reports from the village manager and council, just make note of the fact that we have signup sheets in the back of this room for any of you who are here for the public hearing or any of you who wish to make comments under public comments in the regular meeting. But there are two separate lists. If you will sign those shortly, they'll be collected by the village clerk and brought to my attention. And then I'll call on individuals who are here to speak either about the public hearing, but only the public hearing during that time of the agenda, and then our public comments at the end of the regular meeting. Having gone through that, we'll go to item number three, which is reports from the village manager and members of the council. Jeff?
All right. Thank you, John. I've got two things I'd like to comment on. Both of them are personnel-related. First, I'd like to announce the fact that we have hired a new financial services director for the village of Pinehurst, very fortunate to have hired Dana von Nostrand. Dana comes to us from the Northeast, where she has several years of experience in the public sector, both doing accounting and financial services work for the College of New Jersey. And before that, she worked as an auditor for a major auditing and accounting firm and also did work in the public sector in that role. Very happy to have her. She and her family recently moved to the local area, and we are clearly benefiting from that. We had a lot of great candidates of note four that we interviewed, really high-quality candidates. We were really happy with the applicant pool for this position, and we got a good one. So that's exciting news for us. And then on the other side, we've got Darren Birch sitting over there. I think a lot of folks know that Darren's going to be leaving us very soon, next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday is Darren's last day. And Darren came to us in a time of need for us, and he has absolutely delivered in every regard. We were coming, he came in kind of midstream in the development of our 2019 Comprehensive Plan and helped to bring that to completion. And there's just been a whole host of things that flowed from that 2019 Comprehensive Plan. They have put immense demands on our planning staff, you know, like the small area plans and other implementation things, major site plans that have come through his department through this time, the moratoriums, which we're going to be talking about later, which flowed from that as well. And throughout it all, Darren has provided just absolute first-class leadership to our Planning and Inspections Department. And we have been very blessed to have him. We're sad to see him go, but he's not going far. He's taking a job with Partners in Progress, and he's going to continue to work on behalf of our community and Moore County as a whole. So it's kind of a bittersweet moment. We're really sad to see you go, but we're happy for you. So with that, please join me in a round of applause. While Darren's, after Darren's departure, Alex Cameron will be taking on responsibilities for supervision of the Planning and Inspections Department. We know he's going to do a bang-up job as well while we go through this hiring process. I think Alex is also going to apply, and we hope he does. We have recently opened up the application process for the Planning and Inspections Department Director, and we hope for the best as a result of that process.
Jeff, thank you very much. Darren, you will be, of course, speaking to us tonight, and as Jeff commented, you have another 10 days or so with us. But from my point of view, as mayor and a member of the council, I'm sure other members may speak to this as well, we really do appreciate the hard work and the time that you've given us here. One thing I've learned over the years in just Pinehurst government is the fact that planning departments are always busy, very busy, in a variety of responsibilities that you have, those departments have. However, I would have to think long and hard if I would have to identify a time of work in your time here that has been busier in the life of the village of Pinehurst. It's been extraordinarily challenging, many times difficult time, but you and the staff have performed well and worked with the community very well and the council members also. And I deeply appreciate that, and I wish you well. Thank you. Moving on into reports from council. From my perspective, I have four updates for council and the public. First of all, like I hope many of you, I visited and participated in the Public Parks and Recreation Master Planning Process last week. It was a very interesting time, watching people flow through and look at the different ideas that have been expressed and expressed their new ideas for consideration in that master plan. And we look forward to the results of all of this in the coming months. I had a meeting with Assistant Manager Jeff Batten and Councilmember Jane Hogeman with representatives of Pinehurst Business Partners to discuss the downtown amenity plan and other opportunities and concerns of business partners. And Councilmember Hogeman will report a bit on that further in our time tonight when we get into the work session. I also, with Councilmember Pazella and Village Manager Jeff Sanborn, had a meeting with representatives of the resort to get a kind of firsthand understanding of them, of their plans for Course Number 10, and also completion of some of their parking locations in the village of Pinehurst, which we're deeply appreciative of. And finally, along with Councilmember Bosch, we attended the topping off of the USGA building, the taller of the two buildings, which would be the Test Center, last week. The steel framing is there and completed, and the topping-off ceremony was attended by members of the resort, members of the USGA, also from the Visitors Bureau, and was a little bit of a ceremony as that building reaches the end of one part of its activity and then gets into another. We'll see rapid work, as it's already been, on the completion of that building over the coming months. Everything's on schedule, at least as of today. That concludes my reports. And Lydia, would you like to have any reports this week?
Sure, John. Thank you. A few weeks ago, I got to go to the annual meeting of the Pinehurst Driving Club, and that is a group of the owners, trainers, and drivers of the horses that compete in the annual harness races, also known as the matinee races. What a great group of people. But I'm telling you, they were absolutely effusive in their praise and their appreciation, expressing their praise and appreciation for what we have done at that track since they were here last year. But they had one concern they expressed about a large tractor, and they also had some ideas for how to increase stall rentals, and they're communicating all of this with staff. So that was really neat to meet with them. Another thing, and Jeff Sanborn, I don't know if this is appropriate for social media, but those horses train seven days a week, 8:00 to noon, on both tracks, the track by the track restaurant and also the One Mile Track. There are people in Pinehurst that don't even know that Harness Track exists, and you can go out there for free. If you go to the small track, you can stop at the track restaurant and have a wonderful breakfast, and then just go south, follow the road south to the One Mile Track. But it's really, you know, it's fun to go out and watch them, and these are some very, very gifted horses, so it's fun to watch them. And if you see Scotty Freeman, who is our track supervisor, talk with him, and he can tell you everything about dirt and horses and how it all works. But anyway, it was a real treat to get to meet with him. Thank you. That's all.
Patrick?
Yes, just two items. I was joined by Councilwoman Hogeman and Village Manager Sanborn. We met with some representatives from Habitat for Humanity earlier, either this week or last, and they shared with us sort of some of their thinking and plans and sort of really collecting more information and transmitting information, but it was a very helpful session about what direction they're trying to head in the Sandhills. They specifically focused on Moore County, Hoke, and Richmond, and they have a very successful business model, trying to be sure that they work within the zoning constraints of our communities. And they've been, I think, recognized is the right word, by some very generous grant from some people nationally who have looked at their program and said, this is the type of Habitat for Humanity program we'd like to invest in, which is what it is. And we have quite a few members of our community who both serve on the board and are active participants in their home-building efforts and also in their second-hand store operation out there on Highway 5. Secondly, the, this is, I guess, somewhat of a question, I'll save it for later for when we have other items, it's just an agenda item. And then I also went to the master planning process for Parks and Recreation. I was very impressed on how they had that set up for community involvement. People had several places where they could exercise their opinions, and we'll look forward to seeing that in other results. I did speak with Mark and told him I was looking forward to seeing any metrics that he can provide us from the past few years when we start to get into planning for the next few years. Thank you.
Jane?
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation event was actually quite well-done and really did give people an opportunity to take a look at the different options that are available and also to put them in the context of cost, which I appreciated seeing. So that was very good, and they had a lot of staff there to help people go through the line and understand it. I thought that the meeting that I had with you, Jeff, and with Pat on the Sandhills Habitat for Humanity, I learned a lot about Habitat, and I think they learned quite a bit about Pinehurst too, and about the mix of housing stock we do have, which is quite diverse, and so forth. So I think that was a very good chance for us to establish contact. And likewise, our meeting with Pinehurst Business Partners, I thought, was productive and helpful. And I would like just to say, with respect to Mr. Birch, I know this isn't probably the very top priority of his responsibilities over the years, but he is behind me in figuring out mixed metaphors, so I think he's still got a lot of hurdles to iron out. But I just make that passing comment.
Or later. Jeff Morgan?
My daily activities today took me through the traffic circle about three different times during lunchtime, and I just want to send a kudos out to the village police. They were patrolling and actually pulling some people over that were acting inappropriately in their vehicles. And so I do thank them for patrolling that and trying to make it a safer community. And the last thing I just want to do is just echo the comments on Darren, and we'll miss you. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on from comments, then, we'll go to item number four on the agenda, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda. However, are there any parts of the consent agenda that a council member wishes to pull out for a later discussion?
I'm going to have a few questions on the public safety reports, just to educate myself. I don't need to ask them at the moment, but...
Why don't we bring that up under Other Business?
Sure.
And we'll get the consent agenda taken care of. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Item number four.
I move to approve all items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Pat Pazella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Move on to item number five, which will take us into a public hearing. Is there a motion to go into the public hearing?
I move to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number one, Moratorium Extension.
That's a motion by Pat Pazella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jane Hogeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll enter the first public hearing number one for today. Jeff Sanborn, do you have any introductory comments on this, or should we go straight to...
I think we can go straight to Darren.
All right. Fine. Darren, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're going to be talking, we're entering public hearing number one. As you can recall...
Darren, can you bring that microphone a little closer, please, or whatever? Thank you.
As you can recall, this was an item that we discussed in work session on January 10th. It is about the moratorium, the potential moratorium extension for the two small area plan areas, which include Pinehurst South and Village Place. So the ordinance has been put together based on that, based on the discussion that we had last time. The current 120-day moratorium ordinance, which is 2214, is set to expire on February 3rd, 2023. Should council want to extend the moratorium again prior to the expiration, a public hearing is already, and this is an old slide, so I'm sorry about that. We are in public hearing right now. The original nine-month moratorium, 2103, was adopted on February 2021. It's been extended four additional times, 2115, 2201, 2204, and 2214. The small area plan, the moratorium areas, as shown in Exhibit A and Exhibit B, this is the boundary of those two areas. Exhibit A, and again, I don't know where I'm pulling these slides from, Exhibit A is just showing Pinehurst South, and Exhibit B, A on the right here should be Exhibit B, which is the Village Place area, so I don't know how I missed that. But it is attached to the ordinance that is currently in Novus, as Exhibit B would be the Village Place area. Ordinance 222301, the moratorium extension, is based on Council Work Session 11023. A 90-day extension is requested for the Village Place area, and 120 days is proposed for Pinehurst South. What this would do is extend the Pinehurst South moratorium to expire on June 4th, 2023, and let me get, I'll circle back to that, and Village Place moratorium would expire with a 90-day expiration date would expire on May 5th, 2023. If you noticed, there was an error when I was putting together the ordinance. I was actually counting from today, or from today. That's in the current ordinance. We've updated that to, with the new ordinance, to reflect the date extending off of February 3rd, which would start on February 4th. So the 120 days and 90 days are included in the most updated ordinance. With that, I'll turn it back over to the council.
Okay. So we're in a public hearing. This is a time when members of the public may address the council on this particular ordinance. Do we have any person signed up? There are no persons signed up. I will ask once more, is there anybody here who wishes to speak to the village council in this public hearing today on the extension of the two small area plan moratoriums? Seeing none, are there questions from the council before we move to adjourn and go into other comments on this? Nope. Is there a motion then to adjourn the public hearing and move back to the regular meeting?
I move to adjourn public hearing number one, Moratorium Extension, and re-enter the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Jane Hogeman. Is there a second, please?
Second.
A second by Lydia Bosch. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're back to the regular meeting. Do council members have any discussion or questions for village staff, particularly the director of planning, on this extension? We discussed this at our last meeting. All right. Seeing none?
I am, no questions. We discussed this thoroughly last couple of weeks ago. My concern, and I just, my concern is what this record says. And when we passed the first moratorium in 2001, actually, it's February, excuse me, 2021, that ordinance said it was initial period of nine months, which is the estimated time necessary for the village of Pinehurst to complete and adopt small area plans and the related zoning and development standards. So that was said two years ago. The statute, the state statute for extending a moratorium, excuse me, one section, Section 160D, 107E, says that when you extend it, you've got to say what new facts or conditions warrant the extension. And the discussion, we had a pretty thorough discussion last two weeks ago about the facts or conditions that warrant the extension. So that's in our record. But another thing that really concerns me with respect to this one that is in our record, in the staff memo, the second paragraph says, 120 days, 120 days, say, while that likely will not be sufficient time to complete all actions related to adopt the zoning amendments, it will allow staff time to continue to work on it. So he's saying in the memo that this might, this might not be sufficient time. And I don't know what development interests are out there that might, this might be a problem for them, but I'm just, I felt like it's my responsibility to point out what our record says, that we, that could be problematic. So that's all.
My understanding is that we're making progress, and that's one of the requirements under statutes, to completely, these two plans and the moratoriums can be extended, I wouldn't say indefinitely, although that possibly exists, I suppose, but not in our case. So I don't know that we have an issue here that deserves too much further attention. Darren, if you had any comment on that, I'd be happy to have those.
No, and I certainly understand the concern that it has taken a little bit longer than we originally anticipated. There were a lot of things that happened in that time period that kind of slowed us up. I think we've now, you know, we've started to really be able to dedicate some staff time to actually working, working through some of these. You're going to, we're going to present you to the Village Place Form-Based Code tonight. That document that you're looking at, it forms the basis for all the upcoming PDO amendments that will, that will implement that Form-Based Code. We actually have Kathy, as you know Kathy Lyles, you've seen her, she's actually working to, she's drafting that ordinance for Village Place. She's not there today, but as she's in the office, she's been dedicating herself to that. So I think we're going to be making very good progress in the upcoming weeks and months to get this done on Village Place. Pinehurst South, we just kind of started working on Pinehurst South with the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think we're making pretty good progress on that because the main, all the main hard work has been done with the Village Place Code. So really, what we're going to be working on in Pinehurst South is really going to be the regulating plan, the table of uses, and the dimensional requirements. Those are the three main implementing regulations that will come out of the code. There's other things like signs and architectural standards and things like that, but those are going to be largely the same in both places. So I think with the additional dedicated staff time that we'll have on this, that we will continue to make progress. I can't tell you how long it's going to take, but we have continued to advance and keep moving towards the goal of getting it to public hearing and getting it adopted.
Thanks, Darren. That's very consistent with the comments and discussion we had at our last meeting. So I appreciate that very much. And that was one of the reasons to stagger the extensions, one to May, Village Place, the other to June, Pinehurst South. As Darren expressed, they're a little bit different stage of development, but I see us making progress there. Were there other comments from council on this particular issue?
I'd echo what Lydia said. You know, I suggested last time that maybe it wasn't, 90 days and 120 days isn't enough time, but that's what we're going with here for now, and we're going to plug away and do the best we can and keep going. So...
Other comments?
Yeah. I expressed this a few weeks ago, that I wasn't prepared to grant an extension until a few things popped up on the radar screen. One was the departure of the person who heads the planning department, which was a bit of a surprise. And also the announcement of the resort's significant efforts down Highway 5, though outside our corporate limits, on Highway 5 there with Pinehurst Number 10. And knowing that we're getting closer on the Form-Based Code, I've been attending Planning and Zoning Board meetings, and they are drilling down on that, and we'll, as a council, probably have some questions, but I think the fundamentals are there for a good discussion. So I will be supportive of this extension. I do have one question, and Darren, maybe you can clear this up. We've had references to potential applications from folks who might want to do something in the development world, and I'm trying to understand how we count and characterize those. I know your next employer has a certain system where they have the people who express interest, and then they go to the next step, and they go to the next step. How do we do that as a village? So if you could say to us in a report, you know, we have column A, column B, and column C, three categories at work...
I mean, the way we look at it, we just, you know, we just kind of keep track of when people come and make comments or come and make contact with us, questions about potential development. So it's just, it's just kind of informal. We don't have a, we don't have a formal system. I can tell you that within the last, probably the last month, you'll, well, you've got an annexation moving forward for parcels down on 120 Trotter. That's four parcels that are currently zoned RMF, so the idea is that that person will be coming to us to explore, you know, development options from a multiple-family standpoint for those particular four parcels. So I'd say that's a more active one that's in the process right now. They're not ready to break ground at this point, so we, I think, I haven't talked to them lately, but I think we have some time there. The other one that we've been getting a little bit more contact on would have been a property over there in the core area. It's a vacant piece of property over by the Boys and Girls Club. It's currently being marketed. So I just, I got a phone call today from a real estate interest, and I explained the situation. Most of these things, they, if they know that there's a timeframe, an end date, so we have a potential end date. So we're working towards getting to that end date with adopting the code. What a lot of, what's going to interest them more so is going to be, what is that code going to look like? What can they, what are they going to be doing with that property? So I think that is, when I talked to the real estate interest today, I said, come in, let us talk to us, so we can let you know what the vision for that particular area is. So if you've got somebody that has a totally different vision for that particular area, then that, then we can have that further, we can have further discussions on that. So nothing else. We've not, I mean, we've had some on the large properties south of Blake Boulevard, but we haven't had a lot of contact on that recently. So it's just been, you know, they'll call us and say, you know, I want potential...
So there are more inquiries than applications or anything of that nature?
I think we've had, yeah. I mean, people floated the concept of, I think, multiple-family on that side, and we've said, I believe we've said, that no, that's not the concept that is on the east side of, on the east side of NC 5.
Thank you, Darren.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Just a comment. We had a robust discussion, obviously, in the work session previously on this. As we move forward, and if this council passes this moratorium, it's another extension. I recognize it's got the power to do that, but it also restricts the freedom of individuals on developing their property per their property rights. And this, we've already had four extensions, and I think it's overboard in what we've done. There are already restrictions on there from zoning, and we have protections. I do not support a continued moratorium. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion on this, motion number eight.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2301, moratorium extension imposing an extended time of an additional 90-day period to expire on April 4th. Is that where it's supposed to be?
It's a change to that.
Oh.
Screen in front of you.
Okay. Okay, so to expire on May 5th, 2023, for Village Place Rattlesnake Trail Corridor, and an additional 120-day period to expire on June 4, 2023, for NC Highway 5 Commercial Area Pinehurst South.
That's a motion by Jane Holgeman. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
A second by Pat Bezella. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed?
I'm unopposed. I mean, I do not support this motion.
Have you voted aye, yes, or no?
No, I'm voting no.
Motion carries three to two. The vote is noted, does carry, and the moratoriums are in effect. Move on to other business. Now, Pat, I think this is where you might want to ask those questions.
Yeah, I got a couple. One's a...
This is on the police and fire reports and the consent agenda, perhaps?
If police and fire are to raise a couple of questions, that would be fine. The main question, I was looking for the answer, I think I know the answer of why the fraud numbers have spiked. It's because of that bank, I don't know if it was Wells Fargo or whatever, where there was all those people who were caught up in that local big problem. So I've seen nodding heads, I'm not going to ask any more questions on that. I am curious of how the number of citations we issued are down 64% over the five-year average. I mean, that's quite a drop. I mean, it's good news, but I'm wondering, what's the explanation? How do we tell citizens, what does that mean, other than that we're citing fewer people?
Good question for Glenn, and I'd be happy to ask him that.
Okay.
I can provide the response to you. These numbers do fluctuate quite often.
See? That was a big one.
The priorities that Glenn assigns to officers and what, where they're focusing, their efforts on, change over time. And we've had a lot of effort on, you know, dedicated to perceptions about the breaking and entering, problem we had, outbreak in the Monticello neighborhood, for example. So these numbers do fluctuate up and down over time, and we have tried to address that by comparing it to a five-year average, so your question is still a very good one. I don't know the answer, but I can get something for you.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Didn't the police chief explain to us, maybe it was a year or so ago, I don't remember exactly when, that the way our village participates with other jurisdictions in doing, you know, traffic patrol had changed, so that we were now mainly responsible for what's going on in our own village, rather than doing some of the, I guess, the state highways and stuff. And that meant that we would see a drop in those numbers, and it wasn't that we, they weren't doing their job, it was that their territory had changed.
Yeah, you're referring to the Highway Task Force.
Right.
Where we would, some of our officers would participate in surrounding communities, not really in communities, more on the state highways, to try to get a handle on speeding and other infractions on state roads, and they would rotate around in different areas. And, you know, for example, when that task force would come into Pinehurst, they'd put a lot of focus on around the traffic circle, particularly 15501 South was kind of a hot point there, where they would issue a lot of citations. So that may be a part of it. We made that transition several years ago. I don't recall if it was within this five-year window or not, but it might be part of the answer.
One other thing, this came from a resident, they were curious, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but the police chief can advise us, is when we issue citations or make arrests, is it appropriate to identify, not by name, but whether or not the individual is a Pinehurst resident or not? So I just, I served that up, and I defer to the...
We certainly collect that information, but it's not information that would be appropriate to share with the public.
It would not, okay. That's what I was looking for.
Not on an incident-by-incident basis. If there was some interest in some aggregate numbers or percentages...
Yeah, no, it was, it was...
...problem with that, but...
Yeah, it was an aggregate was the number, was what the person asked me, not a specific event.
Yeah.
That they thought would help put some things into perspective from their own thinking. So if that's allowable, I'd be interested in seeing that data. Just on to another subject, Mr. Mayor, we have, I think, a good system where we're notified about road closures. I find those emails very useful. I assume they go to a lot of our residents and whoever signs up for the, to be notified. And then I had an inquiry from a resident who said, why didn't we know about X road closure? And no sooner than I got that, I've got a nice explanation from a member of the staff that said that that road closure is not in our village, so therefore we don't go out with that information. So I, to those of you who are watching or listening, we don't notify you about road closings in other communities regularly. If it's in the village of Pinehurst, we have a system in place, you can sign up to get notified about road closures. But if you are traveling somewhere else and you didn't know a road was closed and it's not Pinehurst, that's really not what we do. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, that's generally right. There are, there have been some cases, there's one very recently, where we notified members of our public of a section of Linden Road that was being closed that was outside our village limits, but we thought it was important to our residents to notify them because it was so close, and we had knowledge of it. So the other part of that question or equation is that we can only notify our residents about road closures that we know about. And quite often, I won't say quite often, every once in a while, we have a situation where a contractor that's doing either utilities work or work on behalf of the county or something, for some reason, the notification that should be coming to us falls through the cracks, and therefore we're all caught flat-footed in those cases.
I don't know if the other topic is something to bring up now. I mentioned it at our last council meeting, that's regarding the sequencing of our five-year long-term capital needs, as to what to include in the first end versus what to include in the second end, so we can discuss it later if that's more appropriate, or we can discuss it now, whatever, whatever is the will of the council.
Did you want to raise that in the work session?
Work session's fine. I didn't, okay.
I have a comment about the citations, a comment about the citations. You know, I've noticed on the reports we get every day with traffic stops, sometimes you'll see a verbal warning, and sometimes you'll see a written warning, which is fine. And my guess is, if it's a verbal warning or a written warning, it's not a citation.
Correct.
But the good news is, our cops, our police officers are stopping people, warning them either verbally or written, and it's not reported as citation. So just because citations is down doesn't mean our police officers are not stopping bad behavior.
Right. No, I wasn't thinking that. I was just, I was just trying to...
We recently went to this neighbor's system as well, and that may be wrapped up in the answer to your question, Pat.
Okay.
Different way things are reported.
You know, also, I noticed an increase in the weapons violations, like more than 20%, so I asked about that and found out it is related mostly to traffic stops, where they find concealed weapons or firearms by felons or drug-related situations. So that was the explanation for the increase in weapons violations. That's all.
Any other comments on that? Any other business to be brought before the village council? If not, we'll move to comments from attendees. Is there a list? No list, so we'll move on into motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to a work session, which has several key points of business on it tonight. Is there a motion to...
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Second.
A second by Jane Holgeman. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into a work session. When we take a 60-second break, do we need to fix the screens at all?